All right. Good evening, everybody. Welcome. Is everybody ready to get started? We've got a pretty full agenda, so we've got several joint meetings that we're going to be doing together. The first item on the agenda is discussing the comprehensive area plan number one, which is the Washington Street. And then we're going to be going into closed session dealing with the post office parking lot. And that will be joint between the council, the planning commission, and the EDA. So welcome to both the planning commissioners, the EDA members, and also the public. And then council, subsequent to that, will go into closed session regarding the water litigation. So that's how we'll take the order. I'm hoping that we'll have about an hour or so to talk about the comp plan. And again, this is the first time council has seen it. I believe the planning commission has seen it before. The EDA has had some discussions about it, but has not reviewed it in full either. So without further ado, why don't we go ahead and get started? And I'll turn it over to Wyatt and Jim Snyder to kind of introduce it. And I'll preface this conversation with the fact that this is council's first time we've seen it. So what I'd like to try to accomplish tonight is get a sense from council and also the planning commission and the EDA about whether we think this is really ready now for further public discussion as we begin to broach it, or we think that there's significant issues that need to be revamped before it goes out to the boards and commission and to the public further.
Thank you, Mayor Baruch, Chairman Teetz, Chairman Tarter, members of the council and planning commission and EDA. It's good to have everybody in the room together at once. And we're very pleased to be able to have Jim Snyder present the results of his work and the planning staff's work to put together this first area plan. As the mayor said, we're ready for public input on this. Several of the boards, the EDA and the planning commission have seen it already. But the question is, is whether this is ready for formal referrals out to boards and commissions or not to begin that formal process. This process kicked off about a year ago with the council putting it into its work plan, the need to provide greater vision and greater specificity in terms of the types of uses and the density of uses that we're looking for. And to use that planning process as a catalyst to generate interest from the development community and ultimately development that will provide a much better and higher quality commercial use in our commercial districts. As Rick knows from dealing with developers, one of the questions they say is, yes, what do you want? But they also ask, what is the zoning? And so as we're considering this area plan, I'm hoping that everybody is mindful of the next step that would then follow after this, which would be putting the teeth to it through amendments to our zoning codes to accomplish this vision. Without any further ado, Jim Snyder? Thank you.
Members of council, EDA, and planning commission, it's a pleasure to be here tonight. First, I wanted to thank all the planning staff who worked on this. Particular note Garrison Kit, who did the graphics and the layout and wrote a lot of this. Also, our planners contributed various pieces of the report in terms of chapters. Deborah G. did some really good editing. And we had help from the commissioners and the EDA members, planning commissioners and EDA members at the kickoff meeting back in October 29th, when we were all at a cold, kind of rainy Saturday at Columbia Baptist Church. And the kickoff began, if you will. We've been working since then to put a plan together. And this plan represents the first of seven or more of these for the various opportunity areas in the city. This area was picked first for a number of reasons. We hope this plan also will be a template for how future plans might be done in terms of its organization and its layout, so that there'll be a similarity and a relationship with these plans as they go forward. We've tried to do it quickly. So if you remember back end of October, here we are, beginning of March. And I'm very pleased to present this to you tonight. I'm going to run through a PowerPoint which hits some of the highlights of the plan. The plan is on Granicus, and we can get copies for people. It also can be downloaded and looked at. So let me move forward. This is the cover of the plan. And the purpose of this small area plan really was to provide a guide for the city council, developers, the planning commission, and others as to how North Washington Street should be developed in the future. We're trying to create a destination that's important both locally and regionally and linked to important transportation networks such as I-66, the new Silver Line metro rail connection to East Falls Church, the W&amp;O-D trail, and I-66, looking to encourage higher density mixed-use pedestrian-oriented development. And of course, you want to integrate that development into the surrounding areas so that density is friendly to its neighbors. Taking advantage of the transfer point between the Orange and Silver Lines at East Falls Church is clearly a key thing for this area, promoting redevelopment of underutilized commercial industrial properties that will improve our tax base and also improve quality of life. We're looking to increase the amount of public open space and remove impervious area, if possible, to make the area more environmentally and socially friendly, and of course, improve pedestrian access. In the 2005 comprehensive plan, this opportunity area was looked at, but there wasn't ever really a plan developed. There's some text in the comp plan that describes it. Since then, we've had the Silver Line construction, which is going to make this station nearby very important. The East Falls Church plan has been approved by Arlington. We've had developer interest and activity in the area. North Gate project's under construction. The Gateway project was approved. Columbia Baptist is doing some preliminary work to look at the possible expansion. We have low-density uses on the property, many parking lots. It's not particularly bicycle or pedestrian-friendly, but it also, of course, is an important gateway into our city from Arlington, I-66, and Metro. About 30 and 1/2 acres. It's within a half a mile of East Falls Church, very close to I-66 and W&amp;O-D trail. And of course, it's surrounded by lower densities. It's on the border with Arlington County, next to city center, and we have residential densities on either side of this area. Of course, an important area historically, starting back in the 1700s, the establishment of churches, the original 10-mile square of the district created our boundary line. We have the train stations being built in the late 1800s, the trolley lines being built in the early 1900s, the train stations being dismantled in the 50s, I-66 and the battles with that in the 80s, the Orange Line in the 80s. And now we're moving forward with Metro and expansion of that. This map, I think, shows well the area itself. This is the area we're studying. Here's East Falls Church Metro, West Falls Church. These are the opportunity areas identified in the plan, which we talked about last May. And you can see the proximity, the half-mile radius. This is the closest to the Metro, and this is the quarter-mile. So much of this area is really well situated for transit-oriented development. If you look at it now, you can see some newer buildings. There's some new buildings under construction. We have a lot of parking. We have some smaller office buildings, a large kind of industrial warehouse area, and of course, notable churches. And then, of course, the neighborhoods surrounding it, for which the city is so well-known. Automotive uses, light industrial, you know, we're looking to transition those into higher-density mixed-use development. Of course, that will take time, and we'll have to pay special attention as to how that transition occurs. The churches along Columbia Street are probably here to stay. Some of them are looking to grow. They have to, if that happens, it needs to be done in a way that is compatible with adjacent neighborhoods. Looking at existing land use, the plan has charts which explain, you know, the mix of uses. Again, this is an aerial shot, and this is a view looking from Arlington County up North Washington Street into the city. We don't have much open space in this area. We do have the, really kind of the headwater is a four-mile run, where there's an opportunity to create open space in parkland. Many of you are familiar with the large specimen tree that is in a parking lot along the east side of West Columbia Street. We think there may be opportunities to create open space and possible active uses by building on those opportunities. Mixed-use development, we think, could happen along Columbia Street. West Jefferson Street could have retail. We want to see buildings oriented towards the major intersections. Sorry. Looking at existing land use, you can see it's a mixture of industrial. There is office, private facilities, institutions such as churches, of course, neighborhoods. The land use plan calls for a large area of mixed use, and this is consistent with the vision we're putting forward in this plan. There are these private institutions, transitional uses, and of course, the neighborhood residential uses. This is, of course, the Arlington County line, North Washington Street, Jefferson Street, Columbia. This is an example of a concept of how these areas might fill in and develop over time. And again, these plans will take a long time to happen. But it shows filling in the blank spots, creating retail along important frontages so that Jefferson Street and Washington Street would have retail uses along them. Open spaces could be created along the stream and where there now are parking lots. Buildings would be oriented towards the intersections. These are some examples of, these are done as sketch-up. And again, they're not intended to be the future buildings, but to give you a feel for what could happen if you were able to consolidate properties, build taller buildings, and free up open space along the stream. This is looking at four-mile run with a bridge across to a future open space with possible amphitheater. This is reminiscent of what the Virginia Tech study looked at. There's another version of that, just giving you a feel for the opportunities that could exist with the grade and the open space. Looking at projects that are underway, North Gate, Gateway is approved. Columbia Baptist is working on a plan. We've had some interest from the 400 North Washington Street site, where a three-story office building is to redevelop at some point when the market is right. The North Washington Streetscape Plan was approved, and the Virginia Tech student study was undertaken at the city's behest. These are things that have led us and are incorporated to some extent in this plan. These are the areas where I was just mentioning, the Tech student study looked at this area. The Gateway project's approved for this. North Gate is under construction. This is the 400 North Washington Street area. And this is Columbia Baptist, where they're trying to look toward the future and develop a master plan. These are renderings of North Gate, Gateway, the Virginia Tech study, which looked at repurposing and the reimagination of the Jefferson Street industrial area. Of course, higher density would be focused near the border with Arlington County, near the central part of North Washington Street. This takes advantage of the location near Metro and, of course, the higher-density development in Arlington. Medium density would be on the edges, the northern and southern edges, and then transitioning to a neighborhood scale as you get towards the southwest, it would transition to nearby residential and institutional areas. This concept is displayed here, where the higher-density area is in the center. This is looking at open space, medium density on the edges, and then transitioning to more of a neighborhood scale here. Again, this is Washington Street, Columbia, Jefferson Street. Looking at a cross-section, this is looking at a cross-section at the Arlington County border. These are like the townhouses at Gresham Place, Gateway, and then how development could occur, getting taller in the low parts of the area and then transitioning down to the single-family as you move through the area. So you're looking, you know, this kind of a section here. Of course, zoning changes may be needed. Presently, we have a lot of industrial, which does not permit mixed-use residential, is not permitted. We're suggesting that a good bit of that could go to B-1. Also, some of it could go to B-2. And we have B-3, which is a business district, but it's lower-density and geared more toward automotive uses. So we're looking at this possible zoning changes from what's there to the B-1 and B-2 zones. Looking at that zoning now, this is the B-3. This is industrial. Gateway, North Gate is zone B-1. These are zone transitional. And we're looking at this kind of a zoning pattern where this area on the other side of Maple would go from, possibly, from M-1 to B-1, which would allow more flexibility. The central area could go to B-2 from B-3 and M-1. And we'd have some T to B-1 on the corners to allow this intersection to develop in an appropriate manner. So what would this mean in terms of potential economic development pluses for the city? Well, presently, the area is at a .47 FAR and produces about $1 million three to the city. This is looking at the 10-acre core area. One of our interns in economic development did this work. And then looking at a slightly higher density, there's the potential for this to generate almost $5 million for the city. And a higher density yet could produce some $10 million for the city. So the ability, of course, this will take time and years to accomplish, for an area to go from a relatively low-producing tax revenue base to a higher one is very good because of its location. And when the Silver Line opens, we think that will be an added spur as development goes forward and is successful. This is the area that was defined in that core area. Now, economic development incentives that were adopted by the council last year include tax increment financing. We could do business improvement district. Industrial revenue bonds might play a part. There's the commercial property rehabilitation tax, public parking, undergrounding, things of that, working on the stream area might be targets for funding to help make things happen or partnership efforts. Looking at transportation, we have the Orange and Silver Line, the bus connections with East Falls Church. We're looking to enhance pedestrian and bicycle connections, the W&amp;O-D trail, Maple Avenue, North Washington Street, hoping to bring in bike share at some point. One of the things identified was the potential for structured parking. There's a high-water table in some areas. There may be opportunities to create an above-ground parking structure in the right locations, which could facilitate development around it. So that's something to explore. If that were the case, you'd want to integrate retail and other uses into such a structure. Again, this is just looking again at the proximity. And here, we're looking at some of the pathways for bikes and pedestrians, again, looking at these radiuses around Metro. Again, these are some pictures, just trying to give a feel for what the area could look like, depending on the architecture or what ultimately was approved. None of these are, you know, trying to say, this is what it will look like, but we're trying to give you a feel for what it could become in terms of its scale and the relationship between buildings and open space. This is an example of a parking structure, which could have retail on the ground level, significant amount of parking, maybe public or useful space at the top level, and maybe even a recreational deck on top. Something like this might allow more open space to be created or serve as a centralized parking area for multiple buildings. Looking at urban design, pedestrians paramount, particularly along Jefferson Street, which is fairly flat. Looking at active ground level and possible roof-level uses, corner features on the buildings at major intersections will help enliven the area. There is an enhanced streetscape effort going on on Washington Street presently through the North Gate project. And of course, the city entrance at North Washington Street needs to be picked up. We're looking at architectural guidelines that reflect its location near the Metro and near Arlington. Of course, we'd be looking at, the city has excellent design guidelines as well. This is an example of what West Jefferson Street could be with, you know, defined pedestrian and vehicular zones, retail or active first-floor uses, and then development above. Presently, it's mainly one-story, some two- and three-story buildings. Pedestrian is really at a handicap on the street presently. Looking at how this works out, you have kind of the gateway area, where you'd have higher-density and bigger buildings, possibly. Transitioning as you go further into the city, and then moving into more of the traditional area, where you're closer to neighborhoods and where the private institutions such as churches and some of the healthcare facilities are. This is an example of what a concept plan could look like with buildings lining Jefferson Street, Washington Street, creating some more open space along the stream, and possibly where there's presently large parking areas, residential areas on the edges, and the potential for some expansion by the churches to better use their property. Again, focusing around intersections and along Washington Street, and more height and density in this low area and closest to the gateway of the city. This is looking at Washington Street going into the city from four-mile run. If this is the city-county line, this is the Gateway office building, I believe, and this would be potentially new development going up the grade. This is, again, looking across at the Gateway project, four-mile run, North Gate up here. This would be one of the larger buildings, you know, maybe a focal point-type building, one of the key intersections on Washington Street and Jefferson. Another example of how a corner feature might be used to help give character to the area. Again, this isn't that architecture. It's just an example of what could be done to try to create interesting corners. And then looking down, I believe this is Jefferson Street, where you would have, you know, multiple buildings and pedestrian activity along the street. And again, on the other side, you have open space where the stream is. This is an example of how a parking structure might, you know, might be able to be integrated in. This is another view, looking at roof, potential rooftop locations, where you'd activate the roofs of some of these buildings. Of course, in the environmental side, we've got water, sanitary, and storm sewer improvements that all have to be worked out as development occurs. Really need underground utility lines on North Washington Street and Jefferson Street. And of course, lead certification for new development and public structures would be an important feature. Presently, the city is striving to have silver lead as a standard for new development, and that's something we would want to see here. In terms of implementation, we had the North Washington Street kickoff meeting. Presently, we're reviewing with you and the important commissions this draft plan. Looking forward, we'd have a public review, and with boards and commissions taking the chance, a time to take a look and give their input, and then moving forward with planning commission and city council approval. You know, development proposals could be reviewed in terms of how well they comport with the plan. Really good plans could be expedited. We could work on how do we implement streetscape improvements. I think it'd be really a smart thing to change the zoning to what you want the area to become. Do it now. It's something government is allowed to do, and it sets the tone and gives people an idea of what you'd like to have happen. So some of those zoning changes that we talked about earlier, I think, would be smart things to do. And of course, the city is doing a lot of planning now for transportation improvements, including pedestrian-bicycle connections, bike share, the Metro, W&amp;O-D trail. All of these things, I think, are important on the transportation side to help make this work. So that's a quick look at the plan. Let me just show you something that we have been able to do, so you can get a feel for what this might look like. Garrison Kit has done some work, taking sketch-up and doing kind of a fly-through, so that you can get a feel for what it might be like to be in this area. So if I can get this to work, we'll give you a little aerial view of the areas it might look in the future. Our computer is warming up here. Let me close one of these, and I can open the other. We need a speedier laptop. See if we can get this to go. Yeah, it is. It was working perfectly earlier. It just needs to warm up here. My apologies, folks. Well, we may be able to, I may be able to bring this back, but if you want to pull up the lights, I'll see if we can do this before the end of the meeting. But what this does is it lets you fly through the area and different views, so that you can get a feel for what the area could be like. We think this could be a very helpful marketing tool and for citizens and developers to be able to understand what the overall view could be. We hope we could be able to build kind of sketch-up models, if you will, of these various opportunity areas, so that you could plug in various scenarios, different buildings, buildings that are approved and ones that might be looked at. And so we think it could be a very useful tool to help people explain these area plans. Okay. So that's the end of my presentation.
Great. Thank you very much, Jim, and to the other planners for working on this and bringing it forward. Why don't we just go down sort of the line in the horseshoe with questions and comments? So, John, if you want to go ahead and start?
Really, nothing to say, except, you know, thanking Jim for the work. We've now seen this several times, and I mean--
Can you talk up? I can't hear you.
Oh, okay. I just want to thank Jim for the work, and we've seen this several times, so there's not a whole lot to say. I just, you know, hope, I realize when you look at it for the first time, it, you know, parts of it may be very surprising when you see so many buildings, but I think this is a very good place to start, so hopefully we can move it from here.
Thanks, Sean.
I would just like to agree with John. Jim has done a really excellent job putting this package together. There's a lot of work involved in this, and I think it's very exciting as far as a tool for visualization for small areas and for planning. I'm also very happy to see that in there, it's at least a recommendation for lead silver, which the ZOAC has recommended, and also the Environmental Services Council certainly has been recommending for several years. And I think that sustainability standard will really give a competitive edge to us as a community. And so I'm just very excited to see this package and all the work that it represents.
Thanks.
Yeah, I have nothing to add. We've seen this a couple times, and I really think it's an excellent tool for developers to use and really supportive of the, to me, one of the key features is the potential for increased FAR ratio and therefore increased tax revenue. I think it's a good location to put that and to begin in the city.
Well, I think we're running out of ways to say we got nothing to add, so.
Well, I will add real quick. One of the things I like about this compared to things we've done in the past, it has a lot of detail and a lot of information that can help developers, but it's not overly detailed. We're not dictating that this building has to be this. We've had plans in the past where we really laid out a really strong vision. It was a city center plan that was done, I guess, almost a decade ago, that was very precise, and we never really went anywhere with it because we couldn't find a developer that really wanted to do exactly what was in that original plan. So I think this is what's really great about this, when it has a lot of information, it has a lot of detail, it has a lot of graphics that I think really are very informative, but it's not so detailed that someone can't come in and see our vision and be able to fit a development into there that would work for both sides. You know, and I think that makes a big difference, having that flexibility. Because we've also trapped ourselves. We've put really specific language at times in our comp plan, and we've had to go back and change it to fit a project. And I think that this kind of plan gives us more flexibility. But like Jim said, the biggest thing to this is that we go ahead and go with the zoning changes that go along with the plan, so that the zoning's in place already. We have a lot of projects that come, and the first thing they have to do is change the zoning to be able to fit the project in. So if we take that step, it'll make it a lot easier for developers as well. So, and I mean, the staff has worked really hard on it. And Mr. Snyder's mentioned several times that Garrison Kit did most of the graphics in here. That position goes away in June, and I think it will make it very hard for the planning staff to move forward with the other area plans without him being there. I also think that we have a very small planning staff for the amount of work that we have in the future. So I just want to put that out there, as we look at budgets, that this is very important to have Garrison Kit and to have that level of work on our staff.
Great. Thank you, Melissa. Why don't we just turn to the EDA? Why don't we turn to the EDA?
I thought you did an excellent job in the summary portion of this, to make it really clear. You hit all the points, I think they were really important. I especially like to see the list of, of implementation actions that need to be taken, because in the end, we've got to do something in order to get this to happen overall. Just had two thoughts. One is, it would be good to get the development community's feedback as well, to see if there's some things they could suggest that could speed this up. And then, second, I was just wondering what Arlington was doing, just on the north side of the boundary line, especially on the west side, if there's any activity planned there that would be contiguous with--
And actually, there is, I believe, a proposal that's being looked at on the other side of the creek. The Silverwood Company, I believe, has a preliminary plan in front of the county, that--
But, moving on the zoning, I think, is really critical, because it sends, sends the message to the developers, and it doesn't look like we're going in a bunch of different directions.
Hi, Dave Tartar with the EDA. Jim, as everyone else has said, I think you did a great job here. The last sector plan that I worked on professionally in Arlington cost $2 million, the Crystal City Sector Plan, so you've done a fantastic job with very limited resources, and we appreciate that. I would like to also echo that I think this is great to give developers direction as to what the city wants, to help us get exactly what we do want. And I think it's a big step towards revitalizing this area. Just a question or two for you. Have you gotten any feedback from the landowners, the property owners, or had discussions with them to, to see where they're coming from on this?
We have had some discussion with landowners, and some discussions with the Jennings interests. There are a number of obstacles we're going to have to work on, the, you know, the flood plain issue, there are letters of, of map revision that need to be done, and there are physical things related to the flood plain that need to be worked on, and the city may need to help with that. But, there is interest, I think, recognizing it's going to take time to transition from existing situations, where you have existing buildings and leases. We also have been talking and had interest by the interests at the 400 North Washington Street property, who have some preliminary plans showing an office building redevelopment of that site, which presently has, I think, three, three-story buildings, been there some 40 years, and served the city well, but they're looking ahead toward the time when the office market would be better. So, I think we are trying to engage with, with the business interests, and would certainly want to do much more of that in the future, as the plan gets, gets adopted or revised and adopted.
One or two more quick questions. Do you anticipate any ability to share parking or to reduce parking ratios with shared uses?
Well, I think that is an important issue. Our parking ratios here are much higher than our competitors, and yet, this is a metro-type location, so I think we need to look at, what can we do? What are the proper incentives to get away from the single occupancy vehicle to more of a multimodal approach? The idea of creating a garage can give you much more efficiency in terms of how garages and parking spaces are used. They can be managed better. Even with the low ratios in Arlington, if you talk to folks, you'll find a lot of those spaces are, you know, they're reserved, they have reserve signs on them, but no cars in them, or the lower levels are not used. So, I think management of the spaces we do create is important, getting more efficiency out of them. So, I think we need to probably look into some techniques for managing parking and transportation in a better fashion. We, we put in an application for a grant with, with COG back in the spring, for a TLC grant. We're not successful in that. And I've been doing some research into looking at, could we get some consultant advice on how to tackle that? Because it's, it's a problem for more than just this area. It's an important one. We'd need to take a look at how can we adapt our parking ratios, so they work well and, and can keep us competitive, and are more multimodal than they presently are.
One last question, if I could. Do you anticipate the heights being consistent with the existing zoning categories, or--
I think the existing, you know, the existing zoning categories give you a good bit of flexibility. The B2 will let you have a good bit of height, and it gives council the ability and to add additional height if needed. And, so, I think our existing zones can work well, and gives the flexibility to approve reasonably sized buildings or greater height where it's appropriate. So, I, it might be some tweaking of the existing zones, but I think, in fact, we've got pretty good zoning here, that with some minor adjustments on the commercial side, could work very well for this area.
Thank you.
Hi, Phil Duncan on the EDA. Thank you, Jim. I'd second the motion that the council during the budget process deploy the city's resources so as to get him a faster computer. And also, you know, we've heard that the staffing situation is not what it might be, and, I mean, these things present a tremendous opportunity, all these opportunity areas. You know, if it takes him five or six months to do the first one, and, you know, and we are where we are right here, right now, just sort of getting started on a serious discussion of it, I think we all know that we'd like to move probably faster than that to get the other opportunity areas, and that will require some staff and resources, because this does present the potential for kind of revenue that we'll need to generate to pay for the needs that we anticipate in a lot of different areas, so. But, thanks for the presentation, and I look forward to hearing what the public thinks about it.
Thanks, Phil. Bye.
Hi, Mike Novatny with the EDA. Can't let the microphone go without raising a few questions and comments. But first, Jim, thank you and staff very much. This is an amazing amount of work that you've done in a pretty short time. But, can you, could you pull up the retail slide that you showed before?
Why, could you grab me that pointer?
Sorry to test your computer again.
No, it's just, we just, it's PowerPoint.
So, while you're getting to that page, kind of the lead-up to a comment I'm going to make on the retail. This is the kind of plan that, you know, is going to be a 40, 50-year plan. I mean, the, the kinds of improvements that are made here, they're going to be lasting through our lifetimes, and I think we need to think about it in that context. And, you know, so, a couple of things I wanted to point out on the, on the retail with that in mind.
I'm trying to open it down line here, but if you recall, it was a concept plan showing frontages. I apologize, folks.
Maybe we can talk off the, the actual plan, if there's a page number, Mike, that you want to reference.
Page four dash 10, I think, is that exhibit that Jim's trying to pull up right now.
And, by the way, we did try to design, we did try to design this plan so you'd never get lost, so you know what section you're in, what chapter and what page. So, just look to the right, and you'll find, hopefully, a good reference, so.
Oh, there you go, it's, it's slide 14.
Right here, there we go.
That's it, perfect. Okay, thank you. So, in terms of thinking about, you know, the next 40 to 50 years, I mean, we, I, I really think we need to think about lining retail all the way along Washington, and connecting it to where it meets Broad Street, and get it to our downtown area. And, simply because, you know, these parcels may not develop in the next 10 years or so, doesn't mean that aspirationally, we should not note that retail ought to go along that corridor. And, in particular, even in these areas here, you know, I think you need to show retail as an aspirational goal. I think even here, along the Columbia Baptist property, where parking garage is contemplated, I think we need to think innovatively, and to think about, how do we ask, you know, the developer in the future to line a parking garage with retail in that particular, in particular area? So, so I would just encourage you to, to look at that. This portion back here, I really love the idea of putting retail back here. I, I do question whether or not you can get so much retail back here. And, you know, so aspirationally, it's good, it's a very tough spot. You know, if you've got a couple of cafes back there, I think it'd be great to really enliven the place, but I don't know if you're going to actually line that whole area with retail. So, just a, just a suggestion on that point. Staying with this slide, but not necessarily retail, I would like to see if you would consider a build-to line along Washington and the main areas here, to ensure that, you know, we're going to have enough public space to fit the sidewalks and the street, you know, tree pits and the benches and so forth. I know we have that in the Washington, the North Washington Streetscape Plan, but a build-to line goes a little bit farther than your zoning code. The zoning code just basically says you have to be set back a minimum number of feet, but not necessarily, you know, get you up to the curb. So, a build-to line, I think, solves that issue. Couple of other quick things I'd just like to point out. In the transportation section, I would love to see some language about future streetcar. And if, if we're supporting the idea of the Western Gateway from the East Falls Church Metro Station, which I think we really ought to, I think it's really important for this area, I, I think in the next 40 years, I think we need to think about how do we connect streetcar to that as well. It's something that our neighboring counties are looking at, they're implementing, you know, they're going through design and trying to get funding to get it, you know, at least down Columbia Pike, hopefully to Tyson's Corner one day, and maybe even we get a small connection to the East Falls Church Metro, which would do wonders for our downtown. On page 64, there's some language in there. From an economic standpoint, we say that we're encouraging Class A office development only. I would, I would like you to consider adding retail into that language as well. I think, again, it's, it's kind of the, it goes hand-in-hand with developing a vibrant, lively space that helps the office market, and it also helps bring in revenue dollars. Retail and restaurants are some of our, our highest per square foot tax contribution. So, I would just, I would just suggest looking at that language. And then, the final question I would, I would raise is, in this concept of rezoning ahead of time, it's something I struggle with, because from a developer's standpoint, I think it's a, it's a very compelling proposition. From a city's standpoint, what I wonder is, if you rezone ahead of time, how do you ensure that buildings that develop actually meet the goals of this plan? And so, I'll, I'll just pose that question.
Don't approve ones that don't. I, you know, I think there is that kind of chicken-and-egg issue on zoning. I think it's really important, though, if you want a community to develop a certain way, you need to have zoning in place. And, there, there are debates around the area about how to do it, but I think, particularly in a small area like this, where you want something different, zoning it the way you want it will move it forward. It won't hurt the people who are there presently, they can continue to do what they're doing, but it gives a signal as to what you want in the future. And then, I think it's a question of, you know, making sure the buildings that come through are reviewed in a way that catch you, something that helps you achieve the vision that a plan like this creates.
So, so here's, here's a situation that I wonder if it would happen. In this particular area here, the area plan proposes B2. In B2, by right, you can go up to 75 feet. So, if an application comes through that's a 75-foot office building, that does not have first-floor retail, and the B2 zoning code has a 14-foot front yard, so perhaps they don't say they're going to give the 20-foot clear width on the sidewalk, don't want to do first-floor retail, but it's a by-right development. That proposal, I believe, goes straight to planning commission and for site plan approval, which will put planning commission in that position to approve it, and it will never go through city council. Is that correct?
Well, I think one of the things we may need to do is tweak the zone so that you reference the, when you have certain zones, you reference the plans for the opportunity areas and say that, you know, approval of plans will depend on their conformance with, you know, the vision for that area. That's really what you, we have, we have some basic zones. We want them to match the area that they're planned for, in terms of how they develop. So, I think that's one, it's a small kind of tweak that could be made. I don't think it changes the essential character of the zones, but like the parking tweak, it's something that could make things work and help you get what you want for each particular area. But, that's, that's what I would recommend in that, in those cases, is that we revise those zones to reference these future planning areas and the design guidelines and aspirations in those.
So, and, and I think that's a good idea. In fact, I was kind of thinking along the same lines of, do you take the B2 zone and maybe create a B4 zone, or maybe just amend the B2, but you add in that zoning code the things that we really want, such as first-floor retail, such as making sure that first-floor space is high enough, maybe it's 16 or 18 feet, making sure it has some ventilation for restaurants, so actually, you know, we can get that kind of occupant and that kind of revenue. Making sure that the utilities are undergrounded on the periphery of the project, not just on the property itself, which is an issue that we've come across several times in the past. So, it, if, if we do rezone ahead of time, I, I don't think it's a bad idea, provided you do make those, those necessary amendments in the zoning code that reflect what you're trying to achieve in the plan, so that you don't get in that situation where you have someone come forward with a by-right development, which is counter to this plan, and it puts the planning commission, commission in a position to approve something that's a bit controversial, and it doesn't go through any other process. And with that, that's--
I would love to be in a position to approve a 75-square-foot office building. 75, 75 feet. I, I think that would be a terrific position to be in. That would be controversial.
All right. Before we go around again, I think there's some other members that have come in. I believe I saw Ruth in, in the corner. Ruth, did you have anything you would like to add?
I'll just speak up and say, I echo Mike Novatny's comments. He and I have worked together on the zoning ordinance committee, and I knew he would say something relevant and thoughtful, and I completely support what he said.
Can Andy also join us in the back, from media?
I can easily have him cut this.
Thanks. All right. Why don't we go around to council, and then we'll take up questions again as we come back around. Robert?
Thanks. First of all, Jim, good presentation, but I was also here in the, I feel like I've been here forever, the early 2000s, when we did the Streetscape, and we had talked about the development and, and north abroad, and we hired, after a competition, a master developer who came in to, tried to consolidate those properties and failed. Not because of lack of a plan, as, as Melissa had said, Melissa indicated that maybe it was too detailed. I, I don't remember it being as detailed as that, but I do remember that the biggest problem we have, or had at that point, at least in that space, was property owners, cost of the land, cost of the development, and how is this plan different than that? How are we gonna, what are we going to do differently, so we don't find ourselves in the same position as we did then? Good plan, nothing happens with it.
Well, I think here, this type of plan is looking down the road a number of years. Places like Sherlington, Clarendon, and others have been improving to their present state over the last 20, in some cases, 30 years. So, this will take time to happen. But, I think working with property owners, and, and my sense, talking to various property owners is, over time, if we make the zoning changes, people who own the properties will figure out what to do, and they will, they will have a blueprint in terms of how to move forward. The location next to metro, I think, and once that silver line is open, I think, will be a big incentive. But, even if you started today, you know, a building is not going to be occupied for probably five years, in terms of working through all the planning process, getting all the approvals, getting it built. So, you, you have to remember, and I'm not, I'm just, all you all know this, it takes time. But, having, having a plan that is aspirational, says, here's what we think it can be, I think will help move you along in that way. I worked on the Boston Sector Plan when there wasn't much in Boston that looked anything like Arlington's new downtown, but it has become that. There was a lot of rezoning done of the type I've talked about. The whole downtown core was rezoned from low-density to high-density. So, it, it, it can work, but I think you have to also be flexible, and work with the people who own the properties, and help facilitate the development. I think a lot of this will come from the property owners themselves, and if they feel that there's support for actually going forward and making some of these things happen, if there is a partnership arrangement where it's not all on their backs, we figure out ways to underground, you know, things in a partnership approach. ways to underground, you know, things in a partnership approach. We work on the four-mile-run issue. You know, maybe there's some way to help create some public parking that would facilitate development. If we go into this with a partnership-type approach, that will be very welcome by the development community, and we'll end up with a better product in the end. So I think having a good aspiration is the best way to get a good result.
I just, I'm not going to try to beat this over the head, but I think we did have good aspirations then as well. And we had community support, and we had developers that were interested, and they approached the owners of the property, who at that point were either unwilling to sell or the price was too high that it was prohibitive to build. So I think, I hear what you're saying, and I understand that a plan is a good thing to have, and that this is years out, this isn't something we should expect is going to go up next year or even the year after that. But I think we need to have a different type of strategy on how to get the property owners in on this as well, so that it's not just our idea, but it's their idea. So I hope that we can figure out a better way to work with the owner community that's there.
I definitely agree that you need to be proactive with people, talk to them about what their situation is. We are trying to find time to do that, and hopefully, if you talk to members of the development community, you'll get a sense that there's been a fair amount of that going on, leading up to this plan. And certainly, once adopted, in whatever form, we'd be working with the development community, see what can be done as soon as possible.
And I'll just add a footnote, there is also a sort of a flip side to this, and that's mostly Rick's piece, dealing with economic incentives that council's taken up before that have been approved, that could help incentivize. So, but we're not discussing those this evening, but I'd just make note of that. Robin?
All right, a couple of quick points that I'll just note. I thought, Jim, this was excellent work, given the amount of time and the resources, so thank you and the planning staff for bringing this forward. A couple of areas where I'd like to see just a little bit more tightness and succinctness in the language. I think there's a couple of places also in the document where we could use a bit more clarity, and this goes back to Melissa's point. We need flexibility, but I think we can just be a little bit more proactive in the verb usage. In places, we say "is preferred," "has the potential for." I just think we should just say what we mean without sort of being wishy-washy, and I think just giving a little bit more direction and a little bit more preciseness in the language. Leads, I think we may need to see that expanded upon. I know that we're going to continue to have dialogue about councils' policies regarding leads. I think we may also want some definitions. I think height and density is going to be a huge issue for the community, and I think we need to sort of be not precise, but talk a little bit more about what we mean in the densities, without then having to flip to what's allowed in the various zones, to the extent that we can do that in the document. So those were my general comments, but I think it's a very good document, and I'm supportive of it going out for further input. And one other thing I'll note, and there is a section on traffic, and certainly, traffic impact is going to be a huge, huge aspect of this, so we need to work through those issues as well.
Thank you very much. Jim, this is very good work. I'm one of the members who lives literally down the street from where this particular project is being discussed and talked about, and it gets me excited for the possible opportunities. And I do recognize it's several years, decades potentially even down the road, but I think this is a good start of trying to look at an area that needs to be revitalized. It's a lot of automotive, small office use that's there right now that underperforms for what we need in the city for sustainability. I think we need to continue to work with those, with the property owners there, to at least give them some ideas and find ways that we can incentivize them to potentially come to the table to consolidate some of those pieces of property there. It is the gateway into the city. It is an area that has, at least on that side of the street where those properties are, some residential impact, but not large-level residential impact, where the other side of the street definitely does. So I think there's a lot of opportunities there for some of the levels of density that we're talking about, because it's one of the few places that there'll be, most things in Falls Church, there's a little bit of controversy when it comes to development, but I think it will be not to the level that we generally have, because it is such an area of automotive uses and things like that, that it won't be, have significant impacts on people's properties, where other property developments that we've had have been literally in people's backyards. So I think this is a good start. They're talking about the zoning parts of it, to get that piece working now, I think is good, because I think it gives us an opportunity to help move the process a little bit succinctly, and developers will know exactly what we are asking for within some of these projects, where we've heard in the past that everyone that generally has come in has come in with an idea, and we've always had to work around or rezone, and special exceptions a lot of these projects. So I think if we take care of some of the zoning issues currently, I think we'll be in a much better position as we move forward with this project. But I think we do have some really good ideas here with the staffing. I think, you know, it's good to hear the opportunities that we have and the potential of looking at some, making sure that we have enough staff to do this, because at the end of the day, it is something that is going to be a revenue driver for us, and making sure that we have staff in place to do what needs to be done to move this process along as quick as possible, I think it's a good thing. But thanks a lot to you and the planning staff for what you all have done, and the folks who you've worked with.
Thanks. Joanne?
Again, you know, thank you, Jim. In the spirit of total disclosure, I am also one of those houses that, in fact, is at ground zero, as people know, probably. My house is absolutely right next to all of this development. I think it's an excellent visionary document, and I hope it will resonate with developers. It certainly, as Robin points out, is not a done deal, and, you know, and we look forward to a positive reception. There were just two points I wanted to make. One is obviously self-serving, and the other, the other less so. I'm very happy to see that language surrounding lead, silver certification, is the norm, is the goal in all of our development. I think this is absolutely consistent with our economic goals and sustainability goals in every institutional document that the council has adopted and previous councils have adopted. And again, in my particular case, I'm very happy to see that the plan continues to reflect a sensitivity about transitioning to historic neighborhoods. This, again, is consistent, because I was in those October meetings at the churches, were many of us. The message that I was hearing, in addition to embracing development, was a respect for the historic neighborhoods of this city, and a respect for the character and nature of this city. And I think that any plan that we adopt, again, has to be consistent with the goals and the vision and the mission statements in all of our organizational documents. And I just want to make sure that, I mean, I heard that, but I want to make sure that that is a guiding principle in the development as we move forward.
Thank you, Joanne. Ira?
Thank, excuse me, thank you. Two quick questions, and then an equally brief comment. One, what's the next step? Two, when, how fast can we proceed? And number three, as someone as my beleaguered friend, Richard LaContra, knows, I live inside the city's balance sheet, and we had better get moving as fast as we reasonably and prudently can. We do not have time to talk this anymore than we need to. Now, I'm not saying we should short-circuit processes, but we have few options. We need to move as quickly, I repeat, as we prudently and reasonably can. Thanks.
Why don't we do this? Let me try to summarize, I know that we're getting to the hour. I'm going to try to summarize what we have so far, talk a little bit about process, and then go around one more time to see if there's any kind of closing statements that weren't covered. So as far as items or next steps, one item that I heard was continuing to get specifically developer or landowner and community input, I'm going to add community input as part of that. Two was move forward with zoning, with the underscore of the "but," ensure that there's a hook to actually conform with the plan, however we do that, through zoning. Three is clarity and succinctness in the document. Four is environmental and leads, continuing to work those sections. And then four is traffic. But I do also want to then turn back into the issue of what the next steps are, and how do we get this moving more quickly, which is Ira's point.
I had two questions.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The question was precisely that.
Right. So, and they were, how do we get this out quickly?
What's the next step? The next step, naturally, would be for the council to refer this out to boards and
commissions. And so what you would be referring out is this plan with the resolution adopting it. And we would use the model of the watershed management plan to say that the comp plan would include this plan by reference. And I think that's an important procedural point, that this, you know, it gets to the level of detail, and whether there's going to be a useful tool or something that we might, how we use it. If it's too detailed and it's built into the comp plan, if there's any deviation to that, then you needed an amendment to the comp plan. And so what we've proposed is to incorporate it by reference, and then this is what we use when we sit down with developers and the community to talk about specific projects. So the referral out would be at your next meeting on the 12th, and then the council can set the time, usually it's 45 days, and planning commission, EDA, all the other boards and commissions, and then have it come back to the council in April.
Does that answer a question? Okay, great.
Yeah, so that would be April 23rd would be the fastest, I think, that that board and commission review could occur. May would make sure that we got them all and made sure that we don't have special meetings and things like that.
Great. And if we can just lay out for the public when their inputs are somewhere on the website as we normally do? Why don't we go around for any last parting shots?
Just two things. First, on our schedule, we're already doing something tentatively March 24th on this, so we're, you know, set to go. But on the funding issue, and I raised this a year ago, we would not be seeing this now if Jim didn't already have a lot of Virginia Tech study work to fall back on. You wouldn't be seeing this for months and months and months. So he's got that in a couple other places, but in general, you know, he'll be starting from square one, which is not what this was. So to move fast, he needs help, and, you know, Garrison's gone as of June, and, you know, he really needs the resources. So I think we've been as subtle as we usually are.
Heard and received.
Just three quick things. I think this is a great opportunity to raise revenues for the city and really make our community a very sustainable community. I'd also like to thank Mike for his thoughtful comments. I also serve with him on ZOAC, and I always felt that he addressed issues thoughtfully, and I appreciate that. And the third thing I would like to ask Jim, if, and this goes back to Robin's comments, and that is consolidation of small properties and landowners' economic expectations always seems to have been a challenge here. And I'm just, I would just encourage you to, like you've done with many other areas, and I'm sure you're looking at this as well, but benchmark other communities as well. We're not the only community in the U.S. that's had that challenge, and since it is such a key challenge, if, I would encourage you to look through the industry, through government, planning associations, and see what other communities have done to try to meet that challenge, because until that challenge is met, I think the reality of it is that development won't occur like the way we would like it to. So, that's it. Thank you.
Anything else? Planning commissioners, EDA members, council, any other parting shots? Okay. So why don't we put this on the agenda for Monday, for us to, and again, this would be, not that we're approving the plan, but just moving it forward for public comment and boards and commissions. And then if we can highlight where the public inputs are specifically, because I know that we've got a lot of public here that are interested in commenting on it, so we need to make sure that happens.
One thing, real quick. Mr. Snyder and I have discussed, perhaps within that review period, going back to Columbia Baptist and having one more neighborhood meeting, kind of as a follow-up. So we're looking at time and to see if it's possible.
And I think that worked out pretty well. I don't know what staff resources and planning staff, and I know that EDA, planning staff, everybody was involved in that, but I thought it worked well.
And this would be more kind of like the presentation that happened tonight, but in the neighborhood itself, and we could do some more discussion.
We were looking at possibly, we have penciled in March 24th as a possible time to do that. That's, I think, the Saturday after the town hall budget meeting that council has scheduled as a way to, you know, do some presentations, get some reactions, and conversation going.
All right. Thanks, everybody. All right, we are on to the next agenda item, and I think we may have several motions to do the closed session, given that there's three bodies going into closed session. But before we go into closed session on the next item, as it relates to the post office, I own property at 2043 Gundry Drive, and I was previously filed with the clerk, able to participate in the matters fairly objectively and in the public interest. Upon a motion made by council member, thank you, and seconded by council member, thank you, and passed by a voice vote of city council, council went into closed session pursuant to one, section 2.2-3711A3 of the Code of Virginia, for the discussion or consideration of the acquisition of real property for a public purpose or for the disposition of publicly-held real property, where discussions in an open meeting would adversely affect the bargaining or negotiating strategy of the public body, that to which the post office parking lot. Mayor Baruff, yes. Vice Mayor Snyder's absent. Council member Barry?
Yes.
Council member Gardner?
Yes.
Council member Callan?
Yes.
Council member Pepe?
Yes.
Council member Webb?
Yes.
Thank you.